Okay. I call to order the regular city council meeting on February 13, 2023. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Here.
Salvia?
Here.
Albrecht?
Here.
Gould?
Here.
Peterson?
Here.
Sage?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
Thank you. Would you all please join us for our pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone, and good evening. Welcome to our meeting. We have a pretty full agenda tonight, so we will get moving. But before we start kind of officially, I want to turn the floor over to our city manager to talk about our police chief.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, good evening. The heavy police presence because Renee Cartwright and Melissa Ford are here. We figured they might get a little rowdy tonight, so we brought extra police, just to say. Just kidding. So it's not a secret anymore that our police chief, Steve Shettenhelm, has announced his retirement somewhere around the end of May. Most likely, we're actively seeking a new police chief. At this point in time, I think the applications are due May 3. Huge loss to the community. This isn't the time that we're going to talk about him. We're going to get him later. But really, tonight was about two things. First, we're going to invite -- it's a public celebration we're going to have. So if you write this on your calendars, everybody will get a notice. There'll be a flyer, et cetera. But it'll be May 25 at 7:00 p.m., and it's going to be at the New Roxy. The Roxy said they'll be done. If they're not, we're going to have it in the parking lot somewhere, but we'll figure that out if we have to. But they should be ready to go, and it'll be cocktails and a celebration of Chief Steve's career. So this is kind of a public notice that it's going to be open to the public. We expect there's going to be quite a few people. That's the first part of why we're here tonight, and we're excited to do that. Second part is Holly and Lieutenant Harper Conn, if you will. So staff was trying to think of the appropriate ways -- appropriate is a big word here -- to celebrate Steve and keep it official. So we had a meeting of the department heads, and these two really are the brainchild behind this. And tonight, we're going to make an announcement of what we're going to do that's going to let Chief Steve live in our minds forever, as long as he's still on the planet and maybe even after he's not on the -- so how's that, Steve? We're going for eternity here, Chief.
You're a chief.
So Chief, why don't you come up? Jenny, I think Jenny's here too. Jenny, Chief, come up.
Jenny, you can come on up.
Yeah, Jenny, can get up here if you can.
Or as I call her, Mrs. Chief.
Mrs. Chief, absolutely. The first chief's lady. And Chief does not like accolades. Chief does not like surprises. Chief doesn't like any of that stuff, but tough luck tonight. We're going to -- this is real important to staff, and I think I've talked to the mayor and everybody. And Holly, if you want to go ahead and read your thing.
If he wanted to sneak out the back door quietly, he shouldn't have done his job as well as he did.
That's true.
Please, you know, be easy on me because it sounds like my demise is --
You guys are going to need a -- Holly, you're going to need a mic, so.
I should say.
Yes, for the public.
Oh.
So Holly, go over to the mic.
Yep.
There you go.
Tonight, the city would like to announce the establishment of a scholarship for Police Chief Steve Shettenhelm. The scholarship will honor -- why am I crying? The chief's exemplary service dedication to the community and his educational style of community policing.
So Chief, so there's a plaque and -- sorry, Chief. So we're going to work through the Rochester schools, and Keith can probably talk a little bit more about the concept. But it's for looking to inspire young people out of high school to go on to college, and we're going to try to keep this fun going and keep doing that so forever someone will know they got a scholarship in your name. That's important to all of us to recognize that.
Chief, at the party, we're going to roast you, but that's beside the point. But again, we know you don't like surprises and stuff, but this is just something from the hearts of all the staff. And LT, I know he was a big part of this, and Holly, how we came up with this, so.
Well, thank you very much. I certainly appreciate it. Certainly been blessed with an outstanding career, and geez, if I knew things like this were going to happen, I may quit earlier.
That's why we didn't do it.
It's very generous and very thoughtful, and I certainly appreciate, you know, all the nice things that people have said recently, and I've hopefully have earned all those accolades for sure. So I know really the people to be thankful are the people that are back there in the back row because they're the ones every day that make me look good. So I certainly appreciate, you know, their help and everything that we've been able to accomplish. So thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Check his calendar, Jenny. No traveling. They can't travel around, and so we've got them locked into that date. So it will be a public celebration, a community celebration, and we're looking forward to it. Thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. And Rochester Police, thank you guys for being here tonight.
Absolutely.
You're welcome to stay. We feel very safe. All right, next on to public comments, scheduled, non-scheduled comments. Are there any people in the audience for a public comment? Or Brian, is there anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Does not look like there's any public comment.
Okay. So first, we have approval of the minutes. First is consideration of the minutes of the special meeting of January 14, 2023. Next is consideration of the minutes of the special meeting of January 16, 2023. Next is consideration of the minutes of the regular meeting of January 23, 2023. We can take all those at the same time.
Still moved.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson. Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Marilyn, we wanted your vote on that.
I know. It was important.
Next is the approval of the consent agenda. It's a fairly long one tonight. First is a consideration of a special event application from O'Connor's Public House to hold their St. Patrick's Day event on March 17. Next is a consideration of a special event application from Ra-Ra to hold a St. Patrick's Day Fun Run on the Clinton River Trail on March 17. So I think you run before you car-deep. Next is consideration of special event application from the Knights of Columbus to hold their Tsuchiro fundraiser at Maine and University on March 24 through March 26. Next is consideration of special event application from Ra-Ra to hold an Easter Egg Hunt on April 1 in the municipal park. Next is a consideration of a special event application from Delta Kelly Elementary PTA to hold a family fun barbecue on Saturday, June 3 in the municipal park. Next is consideration of special event application from the National MS Society to hold the WAC MS event on Saturday, May 13 in the municipal park. Next is consideration of special event application from the Alpha Romero and Ferrari Club of America to hold the Italian Happening Car Show on Sunday, July 23 in the municipal park. Next is consideration of a special event application from the Pink Creek Center for the Arts to hold Art and Apples on September 8 through 10 in the municipal park. Art and Apples seems like a long way away. Next, a consideration of a special event application from the Rochester Community Schools Foundation to hold the Hometown Hustle on Saturday, September 16, starting at diversion and South Street. And finally, a review of the current special event calendar.
I'd like to make a motion to approve all but E, F, G, and H.
Could I add J?
E, F, G, H, and J. So we're approving A, B, C, D, and I. Motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Sage. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
So we'll go through the first one is E, consideration of a special event application for the Delta Kelly Elementary PTA to hold a family fun barbecue on June 3. Mr. and Mrs. Parker?
Oh, yes, yes. No, I just wanted to, if I could just start, because instead of do all of them that way, I just had a generic, general question for administration to -- I wanted to know, will there be -- okay, these are all on the weekend. One is from 4 to 7, the other one's 9 to 2, so it probably doesn't matter. And then all day Sunday for G. And did learn that Art and Apples, there is a fee being charged from the community house for that weekend that they use it. So I wanted to know, are the other applicants going to be charged for utilizing the park during the time that another event could take place at the community house, like a wedding or something?
I see Chief Steve coming up.
Chief, back to reality.
The community house situation is an arrangement between Art and Apples and the community house itself. So essentially, Art and Apples is renting the community house so that they have access to parking and don't have a competition between the parking area and things that they need to use for Art and Apples. They use it for artist parking and things of that nature. Also have a bus drop-off, and so it makes that whole parking and busing situation much smoother to not compete with other events that could have happened at the community house.
I appreciate that explanation, so thank you.
You're welcome.
So then there's a motion to pass E, F, G, and H?
Correct.
So a motion by Councilmember Peterson.
Support.
Support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
And then Councilmember Sage, review of the current special calendar. I would just like to add March 12 as Founder's Day at Van Heesen Farm from 2 to 4 p.m. Is that a motion? That is a motion. Motion by Councilmember Sage, support by Councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, the roll please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. We do not have any old business or table items tonight. Thank you, Chief. Or we do not have a public hearing legislative deliberation of consideration of the public transportation agreement between Rochester Hills, Oakland Township, and Rochester for the Older Persons Committee. We have Renee Cartwright, the executive director of the OPC. Welcome, Renee.
Thank you, Mary Bixson, council members. I also would like to introduce Tim Sauvay, administrative directors here this evening, and then from the OPC. And then we also have some representatives from Oakland County, and that's Brett Rassigan and Kristen Wiltfang. So as you are all aware, the countywide transportation millage passed in November of 2022, and OPC, together with NODA, WODA, and SMART, have been meeting with city officials to discuss and implement the allocation, distribution, and use by the OPC of the county millage funds for OPC's current and expansion of transportation services, which are noted in the county agreement exhibits on pages 15 through 24 of the agreement. The agreement has been drafted by the county and has been reviewed and revised with input from the various entities and their attorneys. The agreement was reviewed by John Sterren, who is the OPC's attorney. Under the agreement, OPC will receive 1.9 million this year, 2023, to be used for the purposes stated in those exhibits A and B. The OPC governing board has approved the agreement at their special meeting on February 2. Rochester Hills Council did approve it on February 6. Approval of the agreement by OPC is a prerequisite of the county approval of the agreement and distribution of county millage funds. And so we are here today because OPC requests and recommends that the Rochester City Council approve the public transportation agreement between OPC and the county.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Renee?
Yeah. No, go ahead.
Your pro, Tim Salvia.
Thank you. Thank you, Renee, and thank you, Tim, for being here and presenting this. You mentioned some numbers, 1.9 million. I know from being on the OPC board in the past, we have budgeted approximately 800,000, so that's an approximately double of budget of transportation services. So can you speak to kind of what this first year, what the plans are and what that would look like, how those dollars would be spent towards transportation for our residents?
Okay, so we're looking at adding more positions. At this point in time, we do not have any full-time positions in our transportation other than our manager. So we're looking at adding full-time drivers, additional part-time drivers, a mobility manager, and then from there, expanding our hours. So at this point in time, we're approximately 8 to 4:35 and looking at going from 7 till 8. We want to be able to get individuals to their jobs and their employment, and I think this will allow a lot of individuals out there to get the transportation service they need, providing relief to their families and to themselves and not having to be reliant on so many family, friends, neighbors, whatever that might be. So, and this also includes vehicles. So we will be adding more vehicles to our fleet. So at this point in time, that's where that expansion is going, and the additional dollars will go toward. And of course, this also includes an increase in the wage for our drivers and dispatchers.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Thank you, Mayor. Renee, great to have you here, and I'm a huge supporter of this and everything else. And thank you, Mayor Protem Salvia, for asking for some clarification. I think one of the things I was very pleased to hear that you're going to expand the hours from 7 a.m. to 8 p.m., and I know Mayor Protem Salvia had shared with us some of -- from the OPC meetings, some of the different types of vehicles you might be getting. When do you think we'll start seeing the expanded hours, the additional vehicles, and what are you going to do to market this? Because I think one of the things that you're dealing with, I'm sure, are residents who didn't vote for the millage and want to know, how is it going to help us here in Rochester and the surrounding community? So sort of a two-part question.
Oh, and thank you. So we're looking at, I'm looking at, we're, again, adding the positions, and we're almost going to do that right away, is we're at, and just finalizing some job descriptions so we can get those out there. But of course, we have some team members that might want to come on full-time, so we want to give them that option first before we put it all out there. And then from there, I look at April, having some type of a open meeting at the OPC, inviting the public in so that we have a chance to explain to them the expansion and answer any questions that they may have. So I'm looking at having some type of a public meeting in April.
Thank you.
At the center.
Councilmember Gould.
Hi, Renee and Tim. Nice to see you. It's been a while. Thank you for coming. My question, I think you answered this partially, is when are the funds going to come available? But you said you're going to start upscaling now. Where's this going? Councilmember Salvia asked about what you're going to be doing in the next few months to a year. Is there a long-term plan, four-, three- to five-year plan? How big is this going to get? It's, I think it says something about three transit vans, but are we looking at big buses? Isn't this all going to be at the OPC?
Right. So, you know, steady tuned on that regard in regards to, you know, everything happening at the OPC. But in regards to just right now, I think that we did receive a grant from SenCog for two EV vehicles, so that's going to be coming on. We also have three vehicles from $53, $10 through SMART, and those were applied for within the last three years, so those, we're hoping to receive those by March. And then you did see that we had three Ford Transit vans that we're looking at adding on, and we have several vehicles that have actually, or at this point in time, our mileage is, you know, seven years, 160,000 miles, I believe, is where they start moving on and we move into new vehicles, and we have several that are at that point. So we're looking at transitioning those on. And then we're looking at some piloting, a couple of different projects. One of them is adding on some, excuse me, Chevy Equinox vehicles. So, and those would be, those dollars would actually come from the millage dollars, the OPC transit millage dollars, using those transportation dollars to expand our, outside of our area, and that's what we want to do also with the county dollars, so we don't want to get it mixed up. So I want to start with, we just want to expand outside of our footprint of the three communities as for destinations, not picking people up in Troy, but taking people from Rochester, Rochester Hills, and Oakland Township, say, to the Unisource Building in Troy, or possibly to McLaren, or to St. Joseph for medical transportation and for particularly veterans and medical transportation.
Councilmember Trent?
Yes. Hi, Renee. Thank you for coming. I didn't, I was very happy to see that this was going to help the OPC. I mean, to me, it was an unexpected gift, and I think if people, even if they think that it doesn't affect them, I think in general it does, I will, because the OPC is such a jewel in our community. And my parents have used it for many years, but it's good to see the expansion because my parents started using it three or four years ago, and it was like a three or four-day wait. And then it to, you had to call three or four days ahead of schedule or then to get on, to get the ride. Then it went to two weeks and then three weeks, and then they were like desperately saying, "Look, if you know four months ahead of time, get on this schedule." So I could really see that definite need, so I'm excited to see this, and I'm even more excited to see that you're expanding the footprint. Because I think people don't understand the cost of, it costs around $200, $100 to $200 retail to do that, to do these trips. And the service is always exemplary. And the other thing that I was going to say is that as it expands and as you're doing this, communication is key. So if you can get it on your website, anywhere you go, get, I'm just communications hat, talking points down, because this is something that is, should be promoted, that how good it is and how it does benefit the full community and continues the quality of life that this community offers.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
You know, I did fail to answer fully a question. I think it came from you, Mark, was what is our, down the road, our -- so, you know, we're right now, we're at this point, but we are looking, you know, with the end in sight, you know, trying to work toward that. So, and we have listened to individuals throughout the years, like Marilyn, what you're saying, we don't want people to have to wait for their trips. And so we're trying to look at how we can expand this and working with very, the professionals out there, there's the regional, the RTA, the Regional Transit Authority, there's a lot of individuals that have the experience, that know how to take a transit program like ours and help us in guiding us in this expansion. So we're not doing this on our own. We're using those professionals that are out there and wanting and willing to help us along the way. Be successful.
Councilmember Peterson.
Oh, yes, thank you, and thank you, Renee. So question, two of them. First one assessed the qualifying residents, and then they would be eligible riders. What, have those definitions changed at all, or is it still going to just only be seniors?
Seniors and the disabled.
Right, okay. All right, so that's not being expanded, just that? Okay, and the next one is, how much, how many, has they done a study or anything to see what kind of services really need to go until 8:00 at night?
Well, we're finding that that has been a number that we've gotten requests for, so we're going to start with that and see where we can, what we need to maybe expand it to. So we feel like that's a good hard start for us, and then if we do get those requests to go to 9 or to 10 or 11, then we will consider that. But we want to start somewhere, and so that's the number that we started at.
Okay, I just thought that most things are closed by that time, so I was wondering why you would go that late. And then, and then do they have, do you have any idea of how much? Because I know this is going to be an ongoing cost, that we'll still have to pick up some of it, correct? You know, it's not all going to be fully funded by this, is it?
Oh, it is.
Okay, so everything going forward, even the wages and everything, they'll be able to continue?
Correct.
Well, I do know that 66 million a year is a lot, so I would hope that it would all go to good use.
Well, it's including, it was not inclusive of utilities and maintenance, but now it is. It's inclusive of additional staff time, so it's really encompassing the whole transportation and all those individuals that touch it in some way or another.
Okay. And then will we have updates coming to us? I mean, there was a sample in there, it looked like, of what it was going to cost. Will we be updated throughout how it's working and helping, and these dollars help, if it's changed a lot?
Definitely. We will keep you in the loop on that.
And I guess if I have one more question, it would be for the county, though. Does the county have a full written plan on how they're going to be utilizing this money right now that they're receiving each year?
They do, and we'll have Brett come up and speak to that.
Welcome.
Good evening. I wish that Renee wouldn't have said that we do have a plan. We see the first one to three years as very much foundation building, and working with Renee and Tim and NODA and WODA, I think we're doing that. We plan to have a whole series of public engagement sessions probably May-ish of this year. We need to get out in the community and start developing that plan. We think there's long-term opportunity to have the smaller transit providers even connect. OPC could connect a person to NODA who could take them further north, so we want to look at all of those possibilities to connect these small systems. So that's in the works coming up this year. I'm right now trying to hire a transit manager who will be the point person at the county. For the time being, it's me, and some of you may know me, the Main Street Program Trails know his program is mine, so when I get this new person on, it'll be a different person coming to you for the transit topic. But that'll be underway, and we'll make certain that you're all involved with that process.
All right, thank you so much.
Mayor Protem Salvia.
Thank you. So just wanted to ask, city attorney, have you reviewed the document? Do you have any feedback or comments on it?
The easy question is yes, I've reviewed it. I've also had a conference call with Renee and city manager Amanda, and I also had a conference with the city attorney, Sterren, who looked at this not only for Rochester Hills but OPC. And I did have some concern, and when I expressed those to Renee and Nick, she said, "Do you sound a lot like Attorney Sterren?" Our concerns were the same. Principally, whenever I see an Oakland County contract, I always look for the indemnification provision that I always request that they remove, and they reluctantly, or they don't do that. So that is the, always is my biggest concern with the county contracts. In this particular case, so that there is language in there indemnifying them, it's not mutual, it's just one way. The other stuff is, I guess, more operational that Renee clarified for me. One was the, you know, we're getting all this infrastructure or vehicles, do we have a plan to move forward? Is it funded, just like Renee had said? You know, and she explained to me how the time worked, because it's a three-year contract, and my understanding from talking to Renee was the original wanted to do a one-year because it's kind of a new thing, and Renee pushed back, and I think Attorney Sterren probably assisted in that to get a three-year. So there's a commitment for that funding. And so there's, I mean, there's always things that an attorney can find to change, to benefit the side that he represents. But other than that, operationally, Renee satisfied my concerns in that regard, so just the commitments, expansion, she did satisfy my question as to whether or not that was an OPC requested, changed the expansion of the footprint. And she said it was really both. They want to expand services outside of what they currently do, and that's also a goal of the county, so that seemed to be in line as well. So that, I guess those would be the highlights of my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for sharing on those. I guess I would like to make a motion that we approve the public transportation agreement between Rochester Hills, Oakland, Rochester, Older Persons Commission in Oakland County as presented this evening.
I support.
Motion by Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Trent. Discussion, Councilmember Gould.
Yeah, just two things.
Yeah, um, two, just two things, I guess one is more of a, a concern, but, um, I do appreciate the expansion of the hours. There are a lot of, in, in particular, disabled riders and special needs riders that are hourly employees, and those places do not close down at five o'clock, so I applaud your efforts there. My only concern is that it, this is a lot of money, and there's going to be a lot more coming in at what, I, and I know you, and I know you're probably doing this, but taking steps to make sure that the OPC remains the OPC, and not major bus traffic going in and out, and diesel fuel and everything that's going to start to get off putting for your, for your clientele. How, how big is it, that's why I was asking, how big is this getting? Is this the transportation hub, the bus station for Oakland County? And I, I'm sure you're thinking of that already, but that, that's a concern of mine.
Yeah, I, any other comments?
I have, I have a couple of questions. So the, we're going from 800,000 to a million eight. That comes from the tax that the county just levied, it's not coming from the city of Rochester. So we have paid our 80,000, and we're done. Is that correct? That's correct? Okay. So the next question I have is, so we, you guys increase all this infrastructure, and we have a three-year deal with the county, correct? And the county just said they don't really have a plan. What if the county says, we're not going to go through with this in three years? So what happens in year four?
Well, I don't have a, a definitive answer for you. In the, in the millage, it stated, the tenure millage, uh, directly referenced OPC, Noda, and Woda. I would assume that means a continued funding program. Now, I, I can't speak to this program behind, beyond the four-year contract, or the three-year contract that we're looking to put in place right now. I, I can't imagine the county executive and the commissioners backing off on transit, it was the call of, uh, execu- executive cultures, uh, from the moment he took office, so. That's the best I can do on that one, mayor, that I, I'm confident that they're going to continue this program, and the development of the plan will, will happen. That's, that'll be started this, this year.
But there's no really guarantee? There's no contract?
There's no contract beyond the three-year contract.
I mean, I'm a big supporter of, of this and the OPC, but, you know, that's a risk, and it's, it's really amazing to me that the county would assess this huge tax, and then you're saying, oh, we don't really have a plan yet, we're going to like make it up. I mean, it seemed like you'd have the plan, and then the, then the, the tax.
I don't disagree with you. Uh, the, uh, my involvement started after the ballot was approved, I wasn't involved in any of it.
Right, I'm not, I'm not you personally. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no.
Mr. Attorney?
Just one, what, that made me think of one, uh, discussion item that we, that Renee and I were, and Nick were talking about is, you know, a lot of this is front-loaded of buying equipment and vehicles and everything, that those would stay the property of the OPC, so if, if after three years, something different happened, I, I guess a silver lining would be that, you know, or the fallback is the OPC has a bunch of new vehicles that they own. So I just throw that out, because we were, we were chatting about that as well.
Councilmember Peterson?
So I guess mine goes even one step further, based on the comments. So what is the county going to do to help municipalities who are utilizing these services, regarding infrastructure? You know, our own infrastructure? Are they going to be working with us, because it's going to be more wear and tear, it's going to be a lot of other things that'll take place?
Uh, yes, an example is Noda, um, in the Noda contract, there's, I think, $600,000 to fund a parking lot replacement, so we recognize that there will be those infrastructure costs. EV fueling stations, parking lots, there could be garages, uh, that's yet to be determined. I, I don't, we don't pretend to know where those facilities should go. Maybe they don't, if they're needed at OPC, maybe the OPC site, current site isn't the right place for those types of facilities. But that's, that's the kind of thing we'll work with the city on, and the OPC.
Well, I'm, I'll just make a comment. I, we just really received this in the packets to review, um, and knowing that there are some concerns like that, I care about the OPC too, and I know, I've been in this town 35 years, I know what they've, what it's for. But I do think that the county should have reached out probably prior to, on this here, to, to the municipality, to garner those types of concerns, and maybe write something in. And I do think it's a, it's a little bold of the county to, um, not let us have that reverse indemnification in there, because, I mean, it would have been a nice gesture, right? Because we are trying, you, we're being asked to vote on something that we have no, we have no plan, no, no nothing of what the outcome is going to be, or the fallout, right? Without a plan, because we don't know what's going to happen. I don't want Renee and her team of people having major issues later on down the road for what, you know, they've been using all this time to help take care of the people, so.
I, I agree, and, you know, I talked to the, uh, the county attorney about the indemnification, and he said that's, that's how it is. I imagine it, it's in the Nohe's contract, it's, it's, it's something the county does, and I know John Staran, Attorney Staran, recognized that too. I, I, I can't answer that one, councilmember Peterson.
No, it's, it's okay. Sorry, Brett, I like you and all your planning stuff anyhow, so, many times. I guess on that note, though, is there, I mean, even knowing if we would have had this ahead of time, if there was a facility that was needed there at the OPC to take care of the items that are coming in, because we cannot have all this stuff stored outside without coverage and things like that.
And you see the, the funding, if, in fact, um, Noda and Woda are planning bus purchases that won't happen in the next few months, so those we're going to put off until later in the year. We'll adjust their, uh, funding agreement and pass more money through for those buses later in the year. If there's facility upgrades that are needed that we find out about later this year, Renee will bring those to us, and we'll figure out how to incorporate that, incorporate that into the scope, and amend, and amend the scope.
Okay, and would that put any onus on us then, to add money to that? I mean, you would, okay, so it's all going to be fully county-funded with that money?
Yeah.
Okay.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Vixen?
Yes.
Sylvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you Renee. Thank you Tim.
Thanks Tim, thanks Renee, thanks Oakland County.
We'll see.
Next is a consideration request from the Pink Creek Trailway Commission for matching funds towards the TAP grant application for financial support to repair Bridge 31.7. Mr. Sage, do you, would you like to say something, or?
Uh, no, um, I was just happy that Melissa is here in attendance to help us, and Alec as well, to take us through the process.
Alec, welcome.
Hi Mayor, councilmembers. Uh, so Melissa Forrest here with us tonight, she's the trail manager for the Pink Creek Trailway. Uh, we've been working together, putting together, uh, grants for the construction of Bridge 31.7, from the Pink Creek Trail in Rochester. Unfortunately, we just heard back on the SPAR grant, and it's not one of the lucky few, um, out of many, many applicants, they haven't chosen for that one. Um, however, we've been working together to put together a TAP grant, uh, application through M-DAS, M-COG, um, to fund the construction of the bridge. And however, unlike the SPAR grant that they can request 100% funding, this grant requires a minimum 20% match, um, from the local municipality. So technically, the city would be the one applying for the grants, um, not, not the trailway. So the minimum requirement's 20%, and the construction estimate right now is at about 958,000, and so 20% of that would be 191,760. I'm sure most of you remember, the, uh, the city received grants previously to design and engineer the bridge, and I'm sorry if I'm still in most of your thunder right now for talking about things. So it's currently under design, it should be done here soon, um, and if, you know, all goes well with this, uh, with this grant, the construction timeline would be to qualify for bid next spring, and to construct in June of 2024, and be done by November. So in your packet tonight is a draft resolution, so if council wishes to commit those matching funds, a resolution is required with the grant application stating such. Um, and also in your packet is a copy of the draft application, um, that Melissa's put together. So tonight Melissa's here to kind of give a formal, um, presentation request, and talk about the, the project, and any questions that, um, council may have.
Welcome.
Thank you for having me. I think Alec really covered most of the project where we're at right now. But yes, we're looking to get a, a TAP grant, um, and also, uh, match that as well with a trust fund grant for the remaining balance of the project. And so all of the grants that we're applying for, beyond the SPAR, the SPAR grant that we applied for, require some sort of match, uh, to apply.
So the ask tonight is for the 20%, which is 198?
191,760.
191.
Yeah.
Council discussion, councilmember Albrecht.
Well, I have one quick thing before we started. Um, so the, at, the next deadline for this application is February 22nd.
Correct.
So they are quarterly, um, but if we wanted to meet our construction timeline for next summer, we have to get it in this, this month, and Melissa's planning on having a public hearing at their
Our meeting?
Trailway meeting.
On Tuesday.
February 21st.
Yeah, next Tuesday, yes.
My question is either for Alec or, or Anthony. Um, the, the amount 191,760, uh, you, you put as the anticipated budget impact, where's, how's this going to be paid for? Is it coming out of a general fund? Is it from one of our other funds? Where's, where's this money coming from? I mean, we have a lot of needs, you know, we've talked about the community house, we've talked about other things in the city, so, uh, if either Anthony or Alec can sort of give us some comfort as to, I, I mean, we're all supportive of this bridge, and I know this came up at the infrastructure meeting, and we know we need to fix that, that bridge, that's a big number for us to step up and, and, and contribute. We've been supportive of all the grants and everything else like that, so I just want to really understand where that money's going to come from, and who's not going to get the money if we approve this.
Correct, yeah, it's something that has been budgeted for, um, based on the current construction.
Did you say has or has not?
Has not.
Okay.
And based on the current construction timeline, it wouldn't necessarily be for the next fiscal year's budget, it would be for fiscal year ending 2025?
Anthony?
And, uh, thank you, council.
They'll us out of this, Anthony.
Absolutely. Uh, so in fund balance, there's approximately 2 million left on discretionary spending, so this would come out of that balance. That's above the fund balance minimum policy, so that would be a allocation out of there. And, and it's only if it's awarded to, so.
Mr. City Manager?
Right, so, and I talked to Melissa a little bit about this, but these are more bombs that we keep, but we've all talked about this bridge for a long time, but we have a lot of needs, and the good news is it, it's not in this fiscal year. Normally, we'd get ahead of this by a year and start planning to set aside, because I think a lot of people thought we must have, but the other grants were non-matching too, so this is an opportunity. Obviously, it's a huge grant, but I think, uh, we reserve the right, we have to find the money somewhere, it's got to come out of a general fund, so it is in competition with other projects. Again, by committing this, it's to apply for the grant, and then we have to deal with it after that. There are funds available, like Anthony just said, but that, we're not asking tonight to commit to a GL number, because we can't.
Council?
A follow-up, Bear? Okay, uh, just clarify that, so say this gets passed tonight, we are committing to that number, because the grant application's going to say we will, it, I'm going to just take?
We can say no, though, once it comes.
Correct. But the grant would be approved, based on our putting in the 20%, so now you've gotten the grant approved, then it comes back to us, and we say, we were just kidding? We're not going to do it now? Well, I would also, go ahead.
I mean, if we don't have it.
We could, if we, you know, we don't want it.
So we would just decline the grant that we've won?
Correct.
Okay, so we have, okay, that, that. And again, there's a secondary part, if in fact, this comes in at a million five, then the match goes up, you know, the same thing, this is a engineer's estimate, the best we can do.
Mayor, if I can add one thing, uh, if we think back to the, uh, the, the tot lot original amount through Michigan Trust Fund, right? So that had a 25% match for 75,000. So those funds, if we get it, you have a certain amount of time to, to spend the funds, but, uh, you may have an opportunity, like we did, where we ended up using other funding sources to cover the matching component of that. That may be an option, um, i- if we get awarded to then say, okay, can we get that 191,000 covered in some other areas?
Like a grant, or something?
Another grant, yep.
Exactly, whi- which is a possibility, but you're absolutely correct. This, this would be earmarking it, saying, okay, well, at the end of the day, it's 191,000 earmarked, should you accept the grant, then for the construction, you would, we would then have to allocate that out of fund balance.
Councilmember Gould?
Uh, yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Anthony, I think this is a question for you, I think I read in here that it, for service and maintenance, it's going to cost 26,100 some dollars a year, for our portion of this, is that accurate, for maintenance?
That's just how much we budget every year, um, for general, so the, the, the trail and the bridge, it's not that we have the city's property, but we have an agreement with the trailway to, to maintain the trail, and so that 26,000 you're mentioning is, that's just our annual, um, amount that we budget every year for our time and equipment and whatnot.
Okay, so that'll stay the same?
Cutting, you know, limbs and branches, and doing whatever.
That's for the whole trail we have, right? Or is that just for the bridge?
No, that would be your section.
Yeah, that's our portion, yeah.
Thank you.
Further, councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you. So, um, then, since this one starts then until 2025, correct? So we have no idea what the costs are going to be in 2025?
Well, it would be 2024.
2024, but the, you said, okay, there was just 2025 mentioned, okay. So, um, with, what if, so if all those costs come back really high, we're not going to...
We had this, we, the Trailways Commission did a bridge in Oakland Township in 2019, the bids came back higher than expected, and we went out and got an additional private foundation bid to cover the remaining cost above what we had gotten in grant cost, so.
Okay. And this is so we can have access, so an emergency vehicle can go down the trail, correct?
That's one of the reasons, there's multiple reasons why that bridge needs to be replaced, but that's one of the main reasons.
Well, that was what I've always heard, that was the main reason why we were looking at this.
Widening it, it would be, um, upping below limit, and then also making the clearing where the creek is more open to.
There's erosion issues, the fisheries habitat is being impacted, the bridge is not ADA compliant or HSHT compliant, um, it needs to be widened, the railings have to be done a certain way, and so all of those things would happen by re, um, doing this reboot.
Okay, um, then I, I guess, um, make a motion to approve it.
There's already a motion on the floor.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
There is a motion on the floor?
Yeah, yeah, sorry, there was, and it started discussion.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, there's not.
No, oh, okay, okay. But I was going to say, I didn't think, well.
I was like, how quickly I forget?
But I do want to say, Melissa, for you to come, for this to come forth, um, I actually really don't have an issue approving this, okay, because based on your goals and objectives that you put through, and, uh, every year, and you submit them to us, I mean, that you submit to your committee, um, it's amazing that you probably, you do such a great job, that I know that this is very well thought out, everything is really good, and we do need to maintain it so we can continue using that, so, um, I appreciate it very much for what you do for the committee.
So motion by councilmember Peterson?
It's all support.
Support by councilmember Albrecht, councilmember Albrecht, further discussion? Councilmember Albrecht?
Um, I, I walk the Pink Creek Trail all the time, so I'm looking at your drawings, is this bridge going to look similar to the one up in Oakland Township, right where the trout video, video thing is?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so that, that, and I, I can, that's a, a good design, so, okay, I just wanted to clarify that is, because.
Yeah, we're using that project as a model for this project.
Okay.
Is there going to be a way around it, so you can still use the?
When construction is, I think, I think we shouldn't have a problem doing a detour, either using neighborhood streets or dinosaur hills to get through.
Yeah.
Um, I don't think it'll be a problem, whereas when we did that Oakland Township Bridge, we didn't have a, a detour, but we're lucky to have surrounding neighborhoods and things like that in Rochester to make
Very good.
It available to, for use during crisis. like that in Rochester to make it available to, for use during construction.
Councilmember Peterson?
Yeah, so, one other, so, I guess for Anthony, so, I know this is a lot of money, and I know that we haven't even gone through goals and objectives to really get to the bottom of what's truly needed. Can this sense it's not till 2024, can half now and half later, I mean, or do we have to earmark the full amount right now? Just, I mean, because if we say yes to this here, just for the grant application, the money would be there in the future, but do we have to earmark all of it right now?
So, when we look at the multi-year budget, we always aim for where are we heading at the end of the third year? So, I mean, as a formality, it probably, we could do it either way, but it's not going to affect the end of that third year number, right? It's going to be the same whether you split it in three or in half and half, so what I would do is put it into the budget into that year, so that's the fiscal year, and so it'd be starting July next year through June of 25, so I'd put a note in there to have that full amount, at least earmarked or set aside there.
Okay, and one more question, then I guess for Melissa, is this imperative that we do this now, or is it just, that means to rebuild the bridge now, or is it just so we can get the grant money? I mean.
Well, if we don't, if this isn't approved for this grant cycle, then we would not be able to move, this project would be moved into the 2025 construction year, just the way that the TAP grant funding happens, because there's a long process of approval.
Mm-hmm.
And so, that would also push back our funding, applying for funding for trust fund, because they only have one deadline a year. So, if we want to do it in construction year 2024, it does need to be approved.
All right, so, I guess one more, Mayor, if I may. So, I mean, I saw, I pulled up all the SEMCOG grants that SEMCOG approved, is, did they give a reason as to why they did not approve us for that?
Approved.
I thought you, oh, the Spark, yeah, I thought you said SEMCOG.
No one in Oakland County was approved, or Macomb County, Livingston County, a big factor of it was economic data, and so we have not seen the scoring, we're supposed to get the scoring, I think, by the end of March, and I think that's going to give us a lot of information why we weren't approved. The, almost all of the grants that were approved were either in rural or low-income areas. So, and there was only 15 million dollars available, and I believe they had 460 applications and only approved 21.
Okay, okay, so I guess that, I just heard earlier, SEMCOG, and when I pulled up SEMCOG's awarded projects that they had for 2023, I mean, there's millions and millions and millions of dollars, and there are some bridge replacements in there. Have we applied with them?
So, the TAP grant is both SEMCOG and MDOT, and we've talked to both the SEMCOG and MDOT coordinators, and I think we've both, we've gotten positive feedback from both of them on this project. Specifically, SEMCOG told us to go for their funds because it would fit their funding priority, and they did fund the Oakland Township Bridge project.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
Well, that's why I think there was, when it was spoken earlier, it's, I thought I was hearing two different things there.
No, Spark Grant is a DNR grant program, so it's different.
Yeah, they have like 660 million dollars they can't use.
Too many grants, too many acronyms.
Yeah.
Your pro team, Savia?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Mayor. So, it sounds like you're heading down this direction already, just wanted to encourage you, you know, this is a project for safety reasons, we have to, we have to move forward with this, but just really continue to work all those avenues with all those different grant opportunities to get those matching funds recouped for us. You know, I heard you mention ADA compliance, so, you know, I'm sure maybe that's a different level, lever, or bell that we could push to try to get a grant for, you know, that piece that we need, so, but I support this, and thank you.
Mr. City Manager.
If I may, and I want to put more work on Melissa, I appreciate what the opportunities you're looking for other grants, the one I don't understand how Fisheries didn't give us a grant.
I know.
Because it was an awesome, right? It's all about, Fisheries is about fish passage. This is an impediment in the River of the Trout Unlimited, three chapters work on that just to keep it flowing, so I had a call in already, two of the reps there, how can we not point out on that one? But I reiterate, you just said, we have time, let's try to get our number down, because there's so many different ways to come at this, so let's not just give up, you know, and try to find any other opportunities that we can, so.
So, yeah, definitely, we need to work together, and I'm sure that you have.
We'll do whatever we can to help you.
Programs that I'm not aware of, and I'm just.
And our engineers can be looking for stuff too, so we'll work together with you for sure, okay.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Vixen.
Yes.
Savia.
Yes.
Albrecht.
Yes.
Gould.
Yes.
Peterson.
Yes.
Sage.
Yes.
Trent.
Yes.
Thank you. Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do, you know, the Department of Natural Resources just received a ton of money in this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
The Department of Natural Resources for Michigan just received a ton of money in the new budget that just came out that's waiting to be approved at the state, so I think there are going to be other ways for us to get funding.
Yep, well, and there's going to be another round of Spark Grants, there's 50 million dollars on that, so, once we get that scoring, I think that'll give us information on best to apply for that, and we will be planning on applying for trust fund through the DNR. That application's due April 1st, so we may be back looking for another resolution of support, but.
I will say Melissa's been very diligent in all of this, and she's been great to work with, and she's on top of her game, so.
Thank you, thank you, Melissa.
Mayor.
Thank you for this work.
Councilmember Albrecht. Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to add too, outside of the TAP grant, we have three other grants we're.
We're looking, yeah, yes.
Yes, so, remember, we all talked about this six months ago and said, as many grants as we can apply for, let's do it, and that's what we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And we're all going to get 180 dollars. Actually, be too, right? Just kidding. Thank you, thank you, Alec.
I have your account's phone number.
Next is a consideration request to approve the proposal submitted by HydroCorp and to schedule a public hearing regarding the consideration of an ordinance to amend Section 54-264. Alec.
So, since 2015, it's been a state requirement that all water systems include and implement residential accounts into their cross connection control program. So, currently, the city for over a decade now has been working with HydroCorp, and they implement our cross connection control program for all of our commercial accounts. And so, they have now submitted a proposal to also take over and implement all of our residential accounts within our cross contamination control program. So, for discussion and consideration are almost two identical proposals from HydroCorp. This program would consist of creating inventory for our residential water accounts and inspecting for adequate backflow prevention devices on the exterior of the home to maintain security in the city's two drinking water systems. So, tonight, we've got Paul Patterson from HydroCorp is here to answer any questions, and then also Cory Bendick, our water operator, is also here for any questions. But the main purpose of these state laws is to protect the public water system, and so we'll be making sure that we're checking all possible entry points into the water system and just making sure that there's nothing that can contaminate the water system. So, like I said, there's two identical proposals, the only difference is the second one has an additional section, 4.5, which provides cost for HydroCorp to conduct onsite testing in each location, as opposed to requiring the resident to hire a licensed plumber for these services. So, the base proposal would be for a two-year contract for 51,684 annually, and that's just something that we have in budgeting for. And then if council wishes to include the additional cost to have the city pay for testing done by HydroCorp for residents, I'd recommend their budget anywhere from 20 to 30,000 dollars for that, just because we don't know exactly how many, I mean, we know how many accounts there'll be, they'll be checking every year, but we don't know how many they'll have to be testing. So, that would be additional cost on there if the city would wish to cover that for the residents.
So, Mr. Mayor, Alec explained this to staff, and we had a bunch of questions, and so maybe even dummy it down a little bit more even, what, this is, if you have an outside irrigation system, you have the green box, it's got to get tested. We do this for commercial, but for anybody watching, maybe explain it, or the HydroCorp gentleman could do that.
Yeah, Paul likes to talk about kind of what his crew would be doing when they visit each house, and then I guess before he starts talking, though, one last thing, is that we also have a draft ordinance amendment tonight as well, Section 54-264. This would be to codify the city's cross connection control program, it's something that's recommended by the state law to have locality adopt, it's something that the city used to have on our books, but we repealed about 10 years ago at the request of the city's building official at that time. However, now, city staff are recommending that this ordinance be read adopted so as to allow for clear administration enforcement by the city, and HydroCorp is our contracted program administrator. So, I'll let Paul answer any questions on kind of what his crew would be doing when they.
Welcome.
Thank you. Yeah, so, you mentioned lawn irrigation. So, what the contracts were for, or the proposals were for, again, just exterior inspections, and that's exactly what we're going to look for, do you have a lawn irrigation system? If you do have a lawn irrigation system, does it have the appropriate backflow preventer that's required in accordance to both the plumbing code and residential code? Other things we'll look for are simple as hose pickets, garden hose is actually one of the most common cross connections that exist, part of the contracts, those are required to have a vacuum breaker on them if we come to a home and that's all they need are those vacuum breakers, where part of our contract would be just to supply them. So, we really try to make it as non-intrusive and as easy for the homeowner as possible. Like Alec mentioned, there's two different proposals. The first proposal would be, you know, we find all these things, inventory them, when we find a testable backflow preventer, it then needs to be tested and certified. So, Proposal 1, we would send all the notices to the homeowner and informing them, you know, you need to have this tested, you know, please go to our website, we have an entire list of local testers available, you know, there's a timeframe that they need to do that. So, that's kind of Proposal 1, and then Proposal 2, our staff, we have certified testers so we can provide that service, and again, that's an option that we provided, that Alec requested, so, any questions?
And again, I would just say, at staff meeting, we talked about, it's, I understand it's a state law, I understand a lot, but you're telling every resident, I can tell you there will be a good percentage of people that never pulled a plumbing permit to put an irrigation system in, so you're going to find them. So, they're going to find, not only we're going to get them for not having a permit, because you're going to discover it, and then we're going to hit them for testing. So, we have to get way ahead of this, so we need to have to get a letter out to everybody in the system and say, hey, this is what's coming, it's not our idea, right? It's a mandated statement, we've kind of dragged our feet on it for years, but it's time to step up our game and do this right, because it's the right thing to do. Don't underestimate residents saying, you're going to do what to my spigot, and you're going to go in my yard, and you're going to check, what about dogs? I mean, I can think of all the things that, this won't be as easy as it seems, but we support it, but we're going to, again, get ahead of this and communicate it every way we can to let people know it's coming. It's not like somebody's going to show up at your door one day and just say, here we go, so.
Talking about some of the communities that you work with nearby?
Yeah.
Right, so, yeah, we work with Rochester Hills, Washington Township, who else nearby? 145 clients, and I'm driving.
Do Troy?
No, not Troy. Rochester Hills, I will speak to them, they were one of the first to really go down the road with the residential. And one thing we did learn in the Hills, you had just mentioned, they thought they knew where all their lawn irrigation was, so we got started with a kind of pared-down list, so go look at these houses, and we were walking by homes that had lawn irrigation system. So, that was kind of a learning experience for us as well, because it was kind of the infancy of the residential process for everybody. And that's why now, like the proposals we're presenting are, we're just going to take your community, split it up into five quadrants, we're going to do one quadrant, house by house, per year, until we're done through the entire community. As far as public education, you're absolutely right, and we're going to help you any way we can to get the word out. One of the first things we'll do, our marketing group, they do a great job building a website, and it'll look and feel like a city of Rochester Hills website, it will have everything, I'm sorry, Rochester, I was just talking about.
Yeah, it's okay.
But it'll look just like, you know, a city website, and we'll put a link to that on your website, and we'll provide that link, and you'll put it on your website, frequently asked questions, there's educational videos, like I mentioned, the tester list, we'll put a, once we meet with Alec and figure out the zones and quadrants, we'll put a map, so everybody knows, okay, I'm quadrant one, or I'm quadrant two, or three, or four. We'll help you put together a letter to go out, you could put it in your water bills, or, I'm a big proponent of that, the more we let people know we're coming, it's really easier for everybody, including us, you know, it's easier for you, it's way easier for us as well. And as far as, like I said, you're going to get calls from residents, they're not going to understand, no matter what we do, we've got working for you, full-time administrative staff that's trained to answer all those questions, so we always recommend, you know, call them, this is why we hired them, call HydroCorp, talk to them, they can explain it to you, and all, everything we have is pretty much at your disposal.
Yeah, and to touch on that, it's kind of why HydroCorp is really like the main player in the game, is they really provide a niche service for municipalities in regards to, I mean, they handle everything from sending out letters, to providing our educational materials, to providing our annual reports for the state, answering all phone calls, I mean, they really, you know, take a large project and.
Yeah, but it's us they eventually call, so.
Of course, and I will say, Mr. Mayor, two things that, ask Cory how hard it was just to get lead pipe, get into lead pipe basements, and people, you would think that would scare the out of you, and he still, we still have people that fight us on it, and so, again, not knowing what this is about, we anticipate they're going to call us, and we'll work our, now, these guys have done a great job with the commercial base, Roy talked about it at our infrastructure meeting, that they've been professional, and they get the big, the East Side really gets this, and they have great programs involved, but we're not going to take this lightly, how, how many calls we're going to get, we get that, so.
So, yeah, it is going to be a large marketing and informational, educational campaign to start off with.
Councilmember Albrecht.
Okay, a couple of questions for you, Paul, and then one for you, Alec. I'm confused, because I'm looking on the scope of work, and it says, once this project's been approved except by the city and HydroCorp, you may expect completion of the following elements within a two-year period, and it's annually performed minimum 950 initial inspections. So, I'm thinking this is done in two years, but you just said five quadrants year by year, which to me, if I do the math, is five years, so I'm confused by what's written and what you just said.
Yeah, so, it's a two-year, I understand, yeah, it's a little confusing, it's a two-year proposal, but it is a five-year timeline to get through everybody. Essentially, there's, there are renewals, well, there were renewals built into my proposal, extensions, it's essentially to protect us. I mean, we went from one, less than 2% inflation to, you know, eight and a half percent inflation, and when you're stuck in a five-year contract, it takes a toll on a business.
So, if I'm a homeowner, I'm living quadrant three, I'm not going to see you until two years from now, you know?
In the year three of the program.
And then, and we're going to have to come back and renew another contract at least two more times to get the whole city done, and once the city's done, are we then done with this, or does this go in perpetuity?
Just like commercial, where we had to approve of the extension for the contract commercial side was that a few months ago, it'd be the same thing on the residential side.
So, this is going to go, this 51,000, which could be higher down the road, is going to continue, this is an ongoing cost for us as a city?
Until the state law changes.
Okay, then secondly, so I'm a homeowner, and it says, provide up to four ASSE-approved house bib vacuum breakers, again, I like things broke down simply, so you come to my house or any of the residents' houses, and you, I have an irrigation system, I have two outside house bibs, and you find that you need to put in these house bib vacuum breakers, so if we don't approve the inspection, do you then just leave a note saying you need to go get these from Home Depot, or in your thing, you said you do provide up to four of them, so I don't understand what the difference is if we just do the one where they come out and the one where we pay for the inspections, and what do I as the resident or any of the residents get after you've completed this work? Do you put the things on the bibs so we're compliant?
Yeah, I'll work backwards from your question, your last question backwards.
Okay.
No, we won't put them on, we'll provide them, we don't touch anything, because once you touch it, you'll, so, if two weeks later, something breaks or starts leaking, it'll be our fault, and we've been down that road. But we will provide them, essentially, if the homeowner's not home, we've got door hanger bags and a card that'll hang on the door, so when they get home, they'll see it, and they'll say, hey, we were here, everything's okay, here's some vacuum breakers, this is what you need to do. So, we kind of trust the homeowner to do the right thing at that point. Now, you kind of combined two different things there with the hose bib vacuum breakers and the testing of the lawn irrigation system, so one proposal doesn't include that, so, So, again, you would have to hire your own tester to come out. At least I think this is what you were kind of getting at.
So if you look at my, if you look at my lawn irrigation system, and you see it's compliant, do you still have to do a test? Are you testing every lawn irrigation system you find?
Yes.
Okay, so now the difference is, do I pay for it, or does the city pay for it?
Yeah, that's the difference between the two proposals. All of those have to be tested.
Mr. Mayor, are there certain chances where, say the city pays for the testing, they test it, it doesn't work, the resident would still have to then go and pay someone or do it themselves, however they want to do it, to get the right devices to install?
Mr. Mayor, and again, at staff meeting, we...
Have to do this?
No.
Ultimately, you do. But we talked about, why would the city pay for this? Because there's a lot of people in the city that can't afford it, don't want an irrigation system, so the rest of us are subsidizing those that have them. So the second part of this would be, we pick up the $30,000 to $50,000. I don't see why we'd do that. I know we have water fund dollars, but we're not telling you to put irrigation system. And now, by code, you have to have a spigot, I think, on the outside of your house. But I don't know that we want to eat this forever for, when everybody doesn't get a fair share on it either. So I told these guys, this is a complicated discussion, to be honest with you. And we try to add infrastructure, but...
Councilmember Gould.
Thank you. So I have several questions, but I guess my biggest one is, what has changed? Is there a new state law? Because I thought I heard somebody say we've been kind of ignoring it for a few years. Why can't we just keep on ignoring it?
Thanks, Doug.
Okay.
And then the city gets fined, and they go down that route.
Has that happened?
No, not yet. But it's, every year is where I understand it's a, okay, this is, you know, it's your last, last, last chance. We're done telling you to do this, you need to do it.
So...
Councilmember Trent.
Oh, so, yes, so the state is aware, they're the ones giving the warning? Is that what you're saying? Someone's aware of the fact that you need, what you just said?
Yeah, we have to have a cross-connection control program plan approved by the state. Right now, our plan is approved, although it is, I want to say, fifteen years old, and only includes commercial.
I see.
They know that we don't have it, it's broken in place, yeah.
So that would answer Doug's question. Like, they'll say, would they fine us, or what? I mean, are we, why are we going down that route?
Yeah, I mean, I'm sure they'd go, look, we've talked to you about this for eight years now. Those are all warnings, so now, fine with me anyways.
Again, I'd like to know how many other cities haven't complied before we step in first. I get all this, and we've had our internal arguments about this, and I don't see why we'd take the hit. We should be the last ones to take it, if we're not going to get fined, personally. We have a big water issue that we're about to talk about soon, that we have to come up with a bunch of dollars out of our water fund, so.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, well, I started in water in another state where cross-connection was being done in every commercial avenue, never touched residential. But my, I guess my question is, we have, the source of our water is through the city, right? Where that's where all our water's coming from. If you just have a regular residential home, do you, if you don't have irrigation, do you really have a concern if water's only coming in through the street? I mean, that's how my water's coming in. I'm not getting water coming in from any other avenue. So I guess that's mine, and I do know that the state has a nine-year cycle on how they do that, how this was set up a long time ago, back in 20, I think it's like 2010. So how does that change anything? Because, no, I'm not, I'm not real fond on, you know, this kind of stuff. I would rather hire my own person to come and do that, that I can trust that, if you're not going to fix something, and you're going to just put it on and not test, you know, whatever, why would I pay to have a company do that? I would rather just go pay and have it done myself.
Yeah, from, I guess, the staff level, I would recommend that we would go with their first proposal, not pay for the testing, but I just want to make sure that council had every tool available, if they wanted to look at those options.
So we're going to, we would be paying them every year to test everything, all commercial, all residential for, in perpetuity? I don't, I don't get it.
Is it either contracting it out, or they're large enough and capable of doing it in-house, and we're doing it that way? If we need to do that, we'd have to hire staff, and it would be a big undertaking.
Mayor Protem, so.
Yeah, my question is kind of along those lines, is HydroCorp, is, are you the only company that does this? Do you have competitors? Are you the only one approved through the state?
We have very little competition. In Michigan, there's one other company, they're very small. I don't, I can't really speak on their business model, but I know they exist. There are companies out of state. Most of the out-of-state companies don't run programs that necessarily comply with what's required in Michigan. They push paperwork. But in Michigan, there's an actual boots-on-the-ground inspection that is required as part of the Safe Drinking Water Act. So we don't really see them coming into Michigan a whole lot anymore, because a couple of communities hired them and then got dinged by Eagle saying, you're still not in compliance, so.
Yeah, because, you know, my question is, as a resident, you know, here is the city authorizing this, this single source, a monopoly, to come on my property and do some sort of inspection. I don't know, I just have a problem with that.
Council, is there further discussion? Questions? Motion, no motion? Councilmember Peterson.
Yes, I guess because this is coming down from Eagle, correct? Can Eagle come in and talk to us, and come and tell us the importance of why they need to do this? And if their compliance, the compliance cycle is nine years. And if it's a nine-year compliance, are they talking? But, see, they don't get specific in residential in that act. It doesn't say that, so...
I'm sorry, which act?
The one that I, just the one, this public act here, that I just...
Part 14?
Yeah.
Yeah, it specifically mentions residential.
Yeah, but it's added in. It was originally for water supplies being supplied to the masses, and that as well, and then going into the commercial. So if you have somebody coming into a restaurant, you're going to want to have all that.
So we can certainly reach out to Eagle Representative, to see if they could come in?
I don't know if we want to do that. Mr. City Manager, or Mr. City Attorney, if we don't do this, are we liable for things?
I can't answer that. I haven't researched.
I would like to do, you know, I'd like to just postpone this, I want to find out about other communities, who's doing, who's not doing. I think we can dig, this is kind of what I was hoping for, get questions so that we can get them answered, so we make a good decision. Because Cory, I'd like to hear what you think. Everybody's had hose bibs outside their hole since 1950, 1922, my house was built. Now it's a problem that's going to cost a bunch, it seems like an unfunded mandate from somebody, to me. And, again...
But unfunded mandates don't mean you don't have to do it.
Absolutely, I understand that, yep.
So I think one, one thing that's kind of helped the city in this aspect is that Eagle is kind of a mess right now. And so, there's a lot of turnover right now. So our current engineer is still getting to know our system and our operations, but he's already mentioned that, you know, we need to get this residential cross-connection plan going. I haven't heard anything about a fine. I know eventually there could be a fine if we don't proceed with this, but that specific conversation has not been brought up. I do want to mention, though, that this is for the safety of the water system.
That's what I wondered.
So that's the whole reason for this, is to keep our water system safe. If there's ever a negative pressure event from a water main break, or a fire, where the fire department has to hook up to our hydrant, and there's negative pressure, these devices are what, they keep our system safe. So, you know, it's not just financial and the state that we're concerned about, but it's also, it really helps our system, and it does keep the water safe.
And one thing I was asking, so Cory, so this is logistics, but if it's something that's screwed on the spigot on the outside, correct?
Yeah, I should have brought one in. I have them in my truck.
And let's just say, if we were worried about that, and somebody unscrews it, then we're one source, if everybody's not compliant, then we haven't done our job right?
So the state just wants us to make the effort. You know, we can't control what residents do. So we have to give them the option to put that on there.
I'm sure police officers blow a ressource for speeding, and they, second they're done with them, they speed right off again.
It just seems like such an overreach to me, because you can't control it. I would assume that when we put in new irrigation systems, the right things are put into the system to start with, right? So anybody new and did it right?
Yeah, anytime a backflow device gets installed, whether it's for irrigation, or a water-powered sump pump, or whatever it may be, it has to be tested by a certified tester.
Okay, that's a thought. So I guess we can prove this, we could table it to get more information. I don't know what more information people want.
Real quick, Mayor, if you guys wanted to table it, the other second half of the ask was to request that a public hearing be scheduled for the adoption of that draft ordinance. So we would have to have a second meeting to formally adopt that, and you want to table the proposal, that's the end.
We don't need a public hearing if it's...
I want to make a motion to table it. Support?
Okay, so...
Hello?
I know.
Yeah, hold on, right now, Ms. Turner.
Okay.
Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Mayor Protem to table this, is their discussion. Councilmember Trent.
Like, if you're going to table it, you mean, like, is there a length of time you're going to table it?
We're going to answer some of your questions.
Oh, okay.
I will say, there's no, it's not like it has to be approved tonight, or tomorrow. I mean, because there's been so much turnover in my position, and I think the city's been talking to HydroCorp about implementing this system, or this program, for like, what, two, three years now? I think when I reached out to Paul, he goes, yeah, Paul, I'll take the last one and put a new data incentive over there. So this is really just to provide counsel with, here's what the law is, here's the information.
So maybe by the next meeting, you can come up with, what are some other cities doing? Do we have to do this, not have to do this?
Yep.
Yeah, like, what's the downside?
I mean, it is a state law.
Yeah, it is. I see. It's just the questions we answer.
I can say that every surrounding community is doing this, from Water Resource Commission in Auburn Hills, Oakland Township, Lake Orion, Rochester Hills. Shelby Township has just initiated their residential cross-connection program. Troy, Bloomfield, I mean...
Who's Troy, who's Troy using? Because you said you're not doing Troy, and kind of chuckled about it. I was wondering what that meant.
Troy does everything in-house.
Okay.
Yeah, it's inside.
Troy's big enough, they do everything.
Well, just one more thing. Yeah, I mean, water is becoming a bigger and bigger issue. It's not like it's going away. So it's not like we're going backwards, like next year is going to be 10% better, and then a year after that, 20%. It is exponentially, and I am concerned, and I really don't think this is such a bad idea.
As we're getting additional information, could we also find out what's the scope of the fine? Potential fine? I mean, that might weigh into our decision.
Could, plus, safety? I mean, okay, safety, everybody gets sick. Is that another option? I don't know.
Well, they are with lead everywhere else, so, okay.
Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mayor, you got it.
Yeah, so, Ms. Turner, I'm sorry, we're all set.
Yeah, we'll get you a list of questions, too.
Okay. So Ms. Turner, did you have a comment on, for general comment, or on this issue?
On this issue?
Okay, go ahead.
I have questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. Are we talking both inside and outside?
No, just the exterior of your home.
Just the exterior.
Okay. When the water meter, when I got a permit for my, I was the first one, to get a water meter, a separate water meter for my sprinkler system, wasn't a backflow involved in that?
Yes, I would say.
And I have one on the outside, because I had that before we could get a separate meter. So wouldn't that comply?
I can't talk to us inside your home, so...
We don't know, we'd have to have a look at it.
It's a little house. I've been here 40 years.
Hey, Jane, it's Cory. I remember putting your meter in, and the meter is not, has nothing to do with this program. This is just for backflow devices.
I know, but your, what your agenda looked like, I have two. I have one where the water comes in from the city, and I have one to the sprinkler system, and then I have one outside to the sprinkler system.
I don't, I don't exactly understand. Can I maybe contact you tomorrow to discuss this?
Yeah, is this Jason?
This is Cory.
Oh, Cory, sorry. Yes, if you could, I'd appreciate it. You have my number, right?
I do, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Cory, thank you. Next is a consideration request for approved DLZ engineering project proposal for preparation for the 2024 drinking water rate, water state revolving fund project plan for water system improvements. Alec?
You guys sick of me yet?
Nope.
Love it.
Keep asking for money, then. So DLZ Engineering, who handles all of our underground utilities engineering, has submitted a proposal to put together our project plan for the DWSRF application for 2024. So we're currently wrapping up our current project plan through the DWSRF funding. This upcoming summer, we've got three project areas where we'll be doing some utility replacements and road replacements. That'll be the last summer of that. And then, so we're looking forward, we're looking into the future to see what other projects we can apply for funding for. So, so upcoming summer, we're going to talk about that. The project charges for this application are the replacement and upsizing of the water main infrastructure under Main Street, which I think we've all talked about already at council level. So that would be replacing, upsizing, and also adding some new sections of water main, up and down Main Street, to allow for parallel lines. So that would be just over $3 million. And then the other project was a booster station on the east side GLWA water system, and that project's estimated about $1.6 million. And so the proposal for DLZ to put together this project plan, and it's a pretty lengthy document and application, as you can see by the cost of the proposal, it's over $32,000. The scope of work is listed out on their proposal. I think I've talked about the two projects already in the past, but if anyone has any further questions about those, I can answer those. But then tonight, we're requesting that City Council approve their project proposal for a total of $32,000 to complete that project plan. And it's something that has to be completed and submitted by, I believe it's April or May. So, going on.
Councilmember Albert.
Thank you, thank you, Alec. And, you know, we, as you said in your email to us, we're just using up the dollars from the first one. So this will get us the application to them to see if we get money for the next three-to-five-year tranche of money, correct?
Correct, yeah. So, and we've been... Loans, and possibly principal forgiveness, too.
And then we've been able to get a lot done with the first DWSRF. I mean, I'm in full support, and I think this $32,000 investment is money well-spent to move this along, because everything we got done, being on the Infrastructure Committee, and what the public has seen with the DWSRF fund dollars over the last four to five years has really benefited the city. So I would make a motion to approve this request.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Albrecht, support by Councilmember Peterson. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Sounds a little easier, Alec. All right, next is a consideration request for the purchase of trail crossing signage from Traffic and Parking Control Company. Mr. Alec.
All right, so city staff have received a quote from Traffic and Parking Control Company out of Brownview, Wisconsin, however, they do have facilities here in Michigan as well, to purchase push-button, solar-powered, light-up crosswalk signs for four locations where trailways cross city roads. This would be just for the purchase of the equipment, and city staff would install the, and maintain the equipment. So this has been an item that's been talked about at past Infrastructure Committee meetings, to have these push-button, light-up crosswalk signs. We have budgeted to have to do two of them this fiscal year, however, I'm requesting tonight for all four. We're planning on just budgeting for the next two of the next fiscal year. It's easier and with supply chains nowadays, I'd like to do all four at the same time. With your, just the second page of the memo is a map showing the four locations. So Ludlow and Woodward, U.S. University, Second Street in Elizabeth, and then on the Version Street. So these are all locations now that already have signage, you know, each is a typical crosswalk trail signage, but this would be a lot more noticeable. We also have a picture in there as well as what these look like. They're, these things are sprouting up everywhere, so I'm sure you guys have already seen these. They all look the same and you can't miss them. So the total amount would be just shy $51,000 plus shipping, so requesting not to exceed $53,000 to cover the shipping as well. I think Jason said we're looking at a six-weekly time? So hoping to have these in by start of spring for all of our runners and walkers and trail users for the summer.
Councilmember Gould.
Thank you. I think this is a great idea. What was wrong with the company in Michigan? I see there's one in Charlotte.
What's the name of that company?
Dornbos?
The sign company?
Yes.
This company is one, the one that we chose is one that was used by Rochester Hills and I know they had very good luck with them. I know Jason's been working with a couple of other companies and it kind of been left unread by a lot of them. And so this is one that we felt did good work and would have the materials and has been tested out nearby. That's why we chose them.
Jason?
I did take over this project from the former manager and he was working with a company in Indiana that it was not a complete package. It was half of what we're doing here, maybe even a quarter. Then I reached out to Rochester Hills because they were putting all these in by Innovation Hills. These are exactly what are over there. And I'm sorry that the company didn't attach their government purchasing alliance contract, that they share that with all communities. It's not like we have to participate in that. They sell it at that price for government everywhere.
Thank you.
So that's a guaranteed purchasing government price. It's not, and this is an all-inclusive, and working with Rochester Hills, their team has been maintaining these. They, they said they would work with us on, you know, getting them in properly and if we have any maintenance items, a good way to share back and forth problems. I, I think it's going to be what we would expect to have here in this community, not, I did reach out to other similar vendors that you could buy the lesser, nice-looking equipment that doesn't have the durability and low-impact failures. Rochester Hills is very happy with the operation, no failures, no, you know, crazy instances where they're not working properly. It's, I think this is the best that we could get.
Mayor Pro Tem, Salvia.
Thank you. For the public record, we did apply for a grant for these crossings as well, correct?
According to the emails, that was something that the former had done and the grant had expired.
Okay, I thought we applied through SEMCOG this past year and we're told it was too low of a dollar amount.
Oh, okay, yeah, you're correct. I did reach out to them and they said that it was a too small a project.
Right, okay. And, and in that process, we also went out and looked at, is there even a, a more elaborate safety crossing that we could put in? And administration felt like this was the design that was best suited for our community?
Yeah, we looked at lesser elaborate and then these are the most, say, middle of the road elaborate and the nicest looking.
Okay, okay. Well, I, I think this is very important. I think it's very important from a safety standpoint. I have, you know, for years, thought about this and talked about it and I know residents have brought it up. So I, I would like to make a motion to approve this as presented and get it implemented for spring. That's my motion.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem, is there support? Support by Councilmember Trent, Councilmember Albrecht.
Yeah, I'm, I'm in support of this also and they put one of these right by Stony Creek High School, Rochester Hills, after that accident, tragedy accident a few years ago, or a year and a half ago. But on your proposal, Jason, I see 28,359. We're asking for 53. What am I missing?
One of the locations has advanced warning signs. So because of the curve on Ludlow, we're asking for the signage before and coming from both directions, when you press the button to cross, the other signs will eliminate.
He's referring to, that quote was for just two locations.
I thought so, yeah.
Oh, okay, because I saw four, but you're, it's one on either. Okay, 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 so 28 times two, got, okay, um, thank you.
And it's not double that 28 because like Jason was saying, the Ludlow location has extra signage because of that, we had like, um-
Yeah, it does.
-advanced warning.
Yeah.
Good. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I'd like to say I really love the consistency of the end user when they're in Rochester Hills and City of Rochester. I think that was a great idea to, and then also to, for you to, and to get a reference, like this really works and this is gonna work for a while. And also, I like the fact that Rochester Hills is working with us and you, I mean, and to make sure that they can help you maintain it and answer any questions. I mean, that's, that's wonderful.
Well, this would be a new thing for our staff to deal with. So with our intergovernmental agreements and maintenance and stuff, so they, they've been willing to come over and share with the installation, so it'll be, you know, a little more seamless and then when you get that, it's not working today or something, you know, maybe the sun wasn't out or, you know, battery went dead, whatever. So it'll be very helpful for us.
Yeah, I really like that. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Peterson.
Yeah, thank you. So, no, it's great. Been, we were talking about this for years coming in. So my question is, the crosswalk there on Second though, at the bridge, right by going to Royal Park and the walk, are we putting one there?
Yeah.
If that's, if that's one of them, should that one not be the advanced as well because you can't see them when they're coming from the way the topography is around the bridge?
When I talked to the police chief and the fire chief and other, that, that curve is not as abrupt as others, so you can see from a longer distance. There's not a lot of trees, there's not the river, the bridge, railings and stuff like that. And this is something that you can, you know, I brought the manual today, you can always add those things later on too if it becomes, eh, maybe we should rethink this and we should put, you know, some advanced warnings in. You know, if somebody decides to develop that land across from the fire hall and it becomes a, a low-site visibility thing, we can always add it to it later.
It's a lot easier to add things and take things over.
No, it's, it's not that one. It's the one that connects the Royal Park to crossing over. It's beyond the Second Street piece. It's the, to the Royal Park, the walkway?
There's good, there's good site distance, even coming downhill on University, so we looked at that.
Okay, well, me as-
Because you said Second, I was thinking-
It is Second, Sec, on Second Street.
We're putting what, Second and the-
Third and University.
-Second Street Bridge at South Elizabeth.
Yeah, but not the advanced warning. And I think that one should be advanced warning off the top. I walk that all the time and I see that, that one, it's really hard for people to see anyone coming from the trail this way. And I just think that if we're going to do that, at the major intersections where we have the most traffic, I think we should have advanced warning on, on those two, so.
That's an additional $3,900, so if we put them up then, we can always add them to later or if you want to consider it now, I can get the numbers to Alec and send that to you guys.
Well, I just think that our most heavily trafficked areas with bikes and people walking there is, is important, so.
As I mentioned, we discussed this in a staff meeting with the police chief and the fire chief.
No, I, I get it. I know what chief is doing, everything is fine. I just, that's my personal as a resident here as well, so. And are they solar operated at all?
Yes.
So they're all solar too? Okay. I thought I read that, but-
With batteries.
Okay.
So we just changed the batteries out. We have to figure out the life cycle.
Yep, that's fine.
Solar, but.
And I did reach out to Battery Giant, the local vendor Battery, they, they will supply us those.
Local, local.
Even though they're imported.
Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you, guys. Uh, next is consideration of reprogramming of CDGB money, 2019, 2020, and 2021. Mr. City Manager.
Yes, sir. So Oakland County reached out to us and unbeknownst to us, eight or nine months ago, we, we thought this was all done, but it's not done, so we're going to clean this up now with Oakland County. The program funds from 19, 20, and 21 for CDBG. 19 was, if you remember, we approved OPC to, to do their vestibule then, Mr., at Cedarbrook, Mr. Demone donated that, so we didn't have to spend that money. Then the next two years were for a redo of the vestibule here that we decided that we didn't need. So we were understanding that was already programmed, but it had not been. So put Patrick on this, he's done CDBG in his prior life, so we got with the county. Mike at the county was great and he said just reprogram all today at one time for the past three years, it's a total of $86,053. All those dollars now will go into the park to keep our plan going to, to make accessible paths in the park. The good news is, Anthony Marcy and Alex, as they've been working on the all abilities park, there's things we have to do there to make accessibility from the top of the community house to the bottom. So that's paths and new paths. So we can use these funds to help that cost and it's, it's a win-win for all of us. Now, we've been setting aside dollars also every year to do paths. So Jason's bid out with our, our contract that's been great so far and some of this is concrete, some of it's asphalt, but we're just gonna, we get a better price if we do more feet. So now we've got a lot more money to do this and we can speed this process up too. So we're asking for a resolution to reprogram CDBG years 2019, 20, and 21 to eligible paths in the municipal park.
So moved.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. Now reports and regular business, the quarterly financial report for the fourth quarter ending 12/31/22. Mr. Treasurer, Agio.
Good day, Council. The one that's in the packet here is the same one that we went over in detail at the Saturday Goals and Objectives meeting. So there isn't any change to it, so I, if there's any new questions, I can take it, otherwise we'd look to just motion to approve and we have some other things we'll be talking about later.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Trent. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. And then there's receipt of the check register, any questions on that? Councilmember Peterson?
Is AEW usually like a couple months behind of getting billing? Okay, because they're like a quarter behind? Okay, I just saw that, it was kind of odd that they were there. And then so the total for the Big Bright Light is at 260? Okay, that increased over the years, huh?
Um, it's always been about 250 to 260.
Oh, okay.
And then on top of that, then she has to buy backup lights, that's, that's not even that. That's just Dan's installation, but then she buys, I think, thirty, forty thousand dollars for the lights, but that's pretty close. They've, they've been really good about holding their price.
Okay, no, I just saw, I just saw that and wanted to make sure that wasn't an issue.
Okay, so now we'll receive reports from the various boards of commission. First, the historical commission, Councilmember Sage.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As mentioned earlier today, Founder's Day is approaching, March 12th, at Van Hueson Farm at the Cath Farm. We'll be celebrating the bicentennial of the Stony Creek Village. That'll be the presentation this year. We will have a bagpiper and the Shannon Irish dancer troupe will be there in attendance as well, March 12th. I will, I will forward the event bright to everyone on council.
Great.
Thank you. Next, a report from the Principal Shopping District, Councilmember Gould.
Yes, thank you. We met on February 1st. We discussed a variety of options, movies in the moonlight. It's coming back, they're talking about four different dates for the movies, July through August 5th. First is Maverick Top Gun. DC Liga, Super Pets is next, Spider-Man: No Way Home, saw that myself, it's a fine movie. And Moana on August 5th. They have a new projectionist as well. Dancing in the Streets, still talking about potentially having alcohol included, where that would be, how that would work. Apparently requires some level of offense and a single entrance, so they're exploring the parking lot sort of adjacent to it and who would supply said alcohol. The Snow, Snowman Stroll was a huge success, but as with everything else, the price is skyrocketing and those figures are going from 1,150 to 1,750. So they're looking for other sources. Apparently there are other sources. A lot of them come out of Chicago, but there's a company right here in the Detroit area that made those sheep, so pretty excited about that possibility. Just a couple other really quick things. Fire Nice wet well. They felt optimistic that Oakland County will support. They got a little bit of a positive vibe, but no commitment. Obviously, there wasn't a lot of snow. They were considering stuff like that tube sled, I don't know if you saw that, in Royal Oak when they were putting it up. It is foodie February, so if you dine in town, save your receipts and get them, you can scan them and send them into, to Christie and team and be entered into a weekly drawing. Deck art has started, February 1st through April 7th, 20 bucks a deck. They have 400 to sell and get them at the South Street Skate Shop. And spring marketing information is coming out this week, I think.
Pretty good. I would say my conversations with the counties are much more positive about them coming back for Fire Nice, but surprised to hear that.
Yeah, no, Mr. Van Vee called and that's why the mayor tonight signed a, co-signed a letter with Chairman of the DDA, just thanking the county for what they did, just to, and let them know how much we enjoy it. And I, I agree, when I talked to Dave, to Mr. Coulter, that he seemed pretty positive, but Dave, Dave, Dave really loves this thing. He wants us to put full pressure on him to make sure they keep it here, so.
Nick, could you maybe share with City Council, I know you said the mayor and Christie sent something, maybe we as City Council individually could send an email to the, both Dave Coulter and the other person, if you can give us the email addresses, maybe?
Sure, we can do that. It was really from the Chairman of the DDA and the mayor and then we wanted, we sent to Mr. Woodward and then the, the new, I'm not going to remember his name, the new representative that really pushed for the county to throw in an extra 25,000, so we were thinking, he might, we certainly, we can get you those addresses.
Good. Next is a report from the Infrastructure Committee.
I'm taking that, Mayor.
Councilmember Albrecht.
So we met on February 2nd and not to extend Alec's time in the sun tonight, but most of the things we talked about, he presented today.
So we met on February second, and not to extend Alec's time in the sun tonight, but most of the things we talked about, he presented today. But more importantly, we were able to look at, it was like, in some cases, twenty-year plans for CIP capital improvement plans, is that right, Alec? For roads, drinking water, and sanitary. So it was well-laid-out packet of materials. I really want to commend the DPW team for what they put together, but, you know, just taking one of them, we'll take the first two individually, with the road construction and the drinking water, we did a lot of, used those DWSRF funds, and what Alec and his team did was say, okay, for the next twenty fiscal years, here are the roads based on PESA ratings that we feel are most in need of repair. Many of them were just to do the mill and fill, so it was laid out year by year, and basically, I think we'd set aside about five hundred thousand a year to just keep our roads in shape. We all know, as city council, the positive feedback we got from the money we used the end of last year to fix the roads, you know, seven or eight roads, we did the mill and fill, and got a lot of positive bang for our buck there. So we'll continue to do that, and he's really laid that out. Same thing with the drinking water and sanitary sewer system. Again, we had all the relative experts, you know, Jason was there to talk about some of the different areas, and we laid out what had to be done for some of the drinking water and sewer. Many of that we heard in the DWSRF proposal that Alec presented earlier. So we did also talk about the Payne Creek Trail Bridge, the proposed, that came before us today for the twenty percent grant. And with this meeting, which we had on February second, that was, we were able to give Alec the feedback he needed to finalize his goals and objectives for the finance department. I don't know if I missed anything, Alec, or?
Any questions? Mayor, Councilmember Peterson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Is there a way that all of council can receive the information from that meeting, please? Thank you.
Next, on to the Planning Commission, Councilmember Sage. And I would just say, that was the longest city, longest planning commission in the history of the planning commission.
So that's how long the report will be? Summarize that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mayor. So the first item we considered, we had a public hearing for cards on Campbell Street, and this is probably the third, fourth, fifth, or sixth time they've come in with a different site plan. And due to some inconsistencies with the plan as presented and the explanation of the plan, the motion to approve was denied. So we will see if they come back with a revised plan, and we'll go from there. Then we had a lengthy discussion on the Payne Creek Luxury Condos to review the plan that they have, the proposed plan, as well as the requisite conditional rezoning that would be required for the plan that was submitted. At that time, after our discussion, a public hearing was not scheduled, and we are still waiting to hear from the developer as to whether there'll be another plan, a revised site plan submitted that's smaller in scope, or eliminates the rezoning, or whether they come back with the same plan. We don't know. We're waiting to hear. Next, we considered an amendment to Article eleven, the CBD's Central Business District, so that we would restrict some business uses at the street level, primarily office space, if you will, so that it's more focused on retail. Public hearing has been scheduled for March sixth on that item. And then lastly, we considered the lighting ordinance again to address the impacts on residential to residential scenarios. That moved forward a bit. There is a public hearing scheduled for the March sixth, Planning Commission.
Any questions on that? Next is a report from the Facilities Committee. Mayor Protem Salvia.
Sure, I'll start, and I don't know if the other committee members want to add in, Councilmember Albrecht, Councilmember Peterson. So the meeting was held February sixth, and I would also like to compliment Alec on his preparedness for the meet. The materials, we're using the tools that we've developed, in this case, the AMRESCO study, using that data, and actually planning on what maintenance, what projects we need to do. So really good work, we see, coming there. We talked about the municipal building here in terms of key maintenance items like the roof, fire suppression, windows, et cetera. This information is all in our packet in terms of parks, parking decks, community house, et cetera. One item that was not on the agenda, that the team is going to get the information, is Dinosaur Hill. We've got to make sure we've got dinosaur, Dinosaur Hill included in our plan for facilities. Perfect. That's it.
Questions? On to a report from the Sister City Committee. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, so the meeting was held Tuesday, February seventh, at five p.m. at the City of Rochester Hills Conference Room. And we decided in December to invite department heads or general managers of this type of services that they provide. And this time, we had the City Parks Discussion with Ken Elworth, City of Rochester Hills Parks and Natural Resources Director, and Carl Mayer, Mayor, City of Rochester, working foreman of the Parks Division. And so both of them came, and they were sharing ideas. We also got to understand the difference in the amount of landmass that they oversee in the Parks Department. So Rochester Hills, Ken, their staff oversee and manage eleven hundred acres, and on our side, we have sixty-six acres. So that was, you know, it's good to understand. And also, they both had staffing issues, and they discussed that. And making more per hour is always helpful to get more people interested in or working for you. So we were offering eighteen dollars an hour, and Carl said that was, you know, we got more people that way. So then, Dog Park was mentioned by Ken Elworth, and they are planning on creating one at Bloomer Park or Eugene Nowiki Park, which, you know, anybody for a dog park, apparently, you know, they've got them. People love them, especially people with dogs. And we discussed possibly some kind of joint venture, I guess, because we're not going to have a dog park in our future, is my understanding, but you never know. Things can change. We just don't know. So that's pretty much it. But I know that Councilmember Albrecht has something to say about the Memorial Day Parade that we're going to have.
Thanks, Councilmember Trent. We did talk about the resurrection of the Memorial Day Parade. Last year, that parade was held after a few years off, and sort of the Sister City Committee took it on. That Sister City Committee became the committee for the Memorial Day Parade, which we held last year very successfully, the first year, but we sort of got a late start in the spring of 2022. This year, we had our first meeting today. We have meetings scheduled all the way up through May twenty-ninth, which is the Monday, the Memorial Day Parade. We will, at today's meeting, all the members invited are the Sister City Committee members from Rochester, Rochester Hills. Then we also invite people from the Oakland Township, which is the three areas that put together, and the Veterans Tribute. So those four groups were all in attendance today. We talked about budget, we talked about sponsorships, we talked about all those other things. And hopefully, at a later meeting, Mayor, I can give a Memorial Day Parade Committee report, just to keep not only the city council, but the public updated. But it will go on, and our goal is not to just fund the parade for this year, because last year, we raised sponsorship money, and we still had money left over. We want to continue to build up this base so that this parade goes on in perpetuity. We should never forget these people who gave their lives for our country, and we want to make sure the Memorial Day Parade continues on long after we're off of city council. That's it.
Thank you. I hope it's a little cooler, too. Next is a report from the OPEB Board. Councilmember Gould?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We met on February eighth, where the folks from Morgan Stanley, they announced that they'd join Greystone Consulting for backend support, the new logo and stuff, but we were sure that it'll be the same ten individuals that handle our business for the city. Received a market update. I don't think it's any surprise. Twenty twenty-two was not great. We reflected back on that. On some of the dismal numbers, they're in the process of doing a little bit of rebalancing, in particular, the pension that has recovered significantly. I think I wrote down nine hundred thousand dollars in the last few months. Correct me if I'm wrong on that, Mr. Mayor, that's what I wrote. And I think that's essentially the gist of it. They seemed optimistic. They said, we need a few things to happen, and inflation to come down, the Fed to stop raising those interest rates, and earnings to come down, and then everything is going to be great. So they seemed optimistic.
They were very optimistic. Next is a report from the City Beautiful Commission, Councilmember Gould.
Oh, thank you.
You're a busy man.
Yeah, it was a good week. We met on February eighth and welcomed a new member, Julia. I did not write down Julia's last name. I apologize.
Johnson. Johnson.
Julia Johnson, okay. Councilmember Trent was seeking volunteers to cover some of the Rochester Pollinators activities. There's a pretty good list of them, and then Councilmember Trent gave a report involving things like plant sale. I know that Trent Creative has purchased many, many plants we're going to be putting around the city in various places. There were two winter sewing workshops, both were filled. Those ones you saw advertised with little plant containers and such. There's a ton of presentations coming up, February ninth, February sixteenth, twenty-third, by Rochester Pollinators. Dinosaur Hill, this is for the CBC, the City Beautiful Commission has purchased and planted two gardens in front of the Nature Center. Dinosaur Hill's going to maintain those. Lots of plans for native plants around the area, the entry to the trails at the edges of our parks. Pretty exciting. See if there's anything else. Nick reported that we're about running out, I believe, I caught the gist, of the bench sales sponsorship. So there was skating on the pond we talked about. I'm sure that's probably a bad idea now, but there is a lot of talk, I thought this was really interesting, about perhaps trying to make the Kiwanis Shelter, the one wall of it, either paintable or have some sort of a rotating art situation on the side of the Kiwanis Tower. So I think I will conclude that report there.
Very good. Thank you. I'd just like to add, from the OPEB Board, we did have a new member start, David Rotich, who seems very enthused, and we are happy to have him aboard. Now, on to the OPC report, Mayor Protem Salvia.
I'll just say that the entire meeting was on the agenda item we talked about tonight regarding the transportation agreement.
Very good. On to, is there any further public comment? Audience, Brian, we're all good?
All right.
All right, thank you. On to General Miscellaneous, Mr. City Manager.
All good. Knock on wood, it's been a nice winter for the gentleman at DPW, getting a lot of things done that they normally don't get to do in the winter. Lot of organizing, a lot of cleaning, getting things going. So I think they've done, they've kept themselves busy, and we appreciate that. Been able to get out and get trees trimmed, because you do elms and oaks in the winter. So we've been able to do that. I will just want to say one thing that's very disturbing to all of us, and we don't have any control over it until the end, is if you see a company out in the DDA just tearing up corners to put more fiber in, we went at them hard, tried to make them string it as much as we could in the air. At some points, they had to get underground, but we have AEW's monitoring every single site. Jason sends pictures every week, so they're going to put everything back exactly like it was. If it's sod, they're going to put sod, they're going to fix an irrigation. They kill one tree or damage one tree enough, we'll make them put a new tree in there. So the Metro Act gives them a lot of liberties, and we have a bond to cover it, but we're on it, just so you know that. We have eyes on them all the time, and we'll make sure that it's all restored in the spring. That's about it.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
One item, Your Honor, placed before several council members, the petition packets for the deadline is April twenty-fifth at four p.m. That's a Tuesday, and additional packets are available in the clerk's office for whoever wants to pick them up. That's all, thank you.
Elections are never far away. Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing, thank you.
Councilmember Gould?
Yes, thank you. My wife reminded me that the curb is cracked again on First and Wilcox. It's always kind of crushed there for some reason, I don't know why, but, and I was hoping to beg forgiveness for my absence on January twenty-third's council meeting. I was out of town. I tried to make up for it by attending a lot of meetings this week, though.
Motion for an excused absence for Councilmember Gould.
Support. Motion by the Mayor Protem, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the roll, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Salvia?
Just wanted to congratulate Maryland Councilmember Trent on this beautiful cover. It's so nice to see you recognized for so many ways you do public service in our community. So great article. I was happy to see this and read it in my mailbox.
Aw, thank you, appreciate that. It's quite a surprise.
Thank you.
Councilmember Sage?
Nothing this evening, sir.
Councilmember Albrecht?
Just one thing, Mayor. I wanted to give a shout out to Joellen Haynes, our head of Human Resources. On Friday, Councilmember Peterson and myself were able to be the judges for the first of hopefully annual chili cook-offs, where the employees of Rochester, City of Rochester, gathered at the firehouse, and reluctantly, I tried all four chilies and all the hot dogs and everything else, and the desserts and everything else like that. So it was tough, so I had to try them a couple times, but we had winners, and Joellen sent a note out to all the winners where they received some gift cards and other kinds of things. So just a nice event, and as the HR guy, I always think that these kinds of things are just part of what makes the Rochester culture even more endearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Albrecht, we appreciate your sacrifice.
I took one for the team, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Trent?
Yes, I'd like to thank everyone who attended the Pancake Breakfast Fundraiser for Rochester Area Youth Association, and the high school volunteers, and all the other volunteers, and Chief Sizlick and his staff, for all those great pancakes. And for those who don't know what the Rochester Area Youth Association is, it's a dedicated organization that supports young people and their families through a range of resources and services, helping them overcome challenges and succeed in life. And number one is keeping them, helping them with juvenile court system diversion, with an experienced caseworker providing counseling and support for those who may start wandering in another direction. Our youth can do that, and this is a great organization that helps, can, you know, change their lives. They also help with financial assistance for extracurricular activities for lower-income families, family education programs, free day camp for kids, camp safari, and giving parents peace of mind while they work in the summer, and scholarships. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Councilmember Peterson?
Just a few things, and I'll preface this first, that I do believe our administration needs to stay in constant contact with our local elected officials that are at the state and for our representation. I was in Lansing on Thursday, and the good news is, is that revenue sharing to municipalities is going to increase by about ten percent. There's going to be thirty-seven million going to public safety, with eighteen million additional going to the public safety for training, retention, and recruiting. They're going to have two hundred and twenty-five million out there for lead service line replacing. And the budget is seventy-six to seventy-nine billion, and it's up from 2015, which was fifty-four billion, and they will have a nine-point-two-billion-dollar surplus, and we need to talk to our representatives so they don't spend it all down to two hundred and fifty million without any planned projects or anything. I think it's important that we do that. I think it's important, from what I heard, that we also work with them to help change some of the criteria that they use for grants and things like that, because I think that they're missing the pulse. As I brought up at the chili cook-off to administration, you know, we have an aging demographic, which is going to be even bigger throughout the whole state, and I think that some of this criteria for grants needs to focus on that as well, for even in general grants for infrastructure, et cetera. So I think that if we can stay on top of them, have them come before us, because that's what they were elected to do, is to help report to us, I think it would be great. And other than that, I think that they have a tough road ahead of them, getting this budget approved. But I do want to thank Joellen and all those who brought chili in, because all the chili was really awesome, and we have some great cooks, so anytime they want to do it again, I think that would be great.
Very good. Thank you. I just have a couple of quick things. I'd also like to congratulate Raya for the pancake breakfast. I stopped by there as well. I missed Councilmember Trent for just a few minutes, and I spent most of my time talking to the fire guys while they were making pancakes. I was watching them. This is very important, I thought. And then, just for a reminder, the twenty-seventh is the Community Outlook Breakfast. If anybody, we have a table, so if any council members want to attend, let Nick know for that event. And just so everybody knows, I have filmed a TikTok video that's going to be displayed.
Stewart. It's TikTok?
TikTok.
Wow, I don't even have a TikTok.
You're progressive.
You have to come to the Community Outlook, and I tested it on some of my students, and they thought that I had potential as an influencer somewhere. So without that, do we have a motion to go into closed session?
So moved.
Without the anticipation of returning? So, motion by Councilmember Peterson, support by Councilmember Albrecht. Madam Clerk, the role, please.
Bixson?
Yes.
Salvia?
Yes.
Albrecht?
Yes.
Gould?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Sage?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
We'll take a five-minute break.
So what's going on? We going to the Outlook Breakfast?